Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM. I'd like to call tonight's city council meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, if we'd all stand, led by Councilmember Klein.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, white nation under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
If you'd all remain standing, please. We have an invocation by Pastor Malcolm McPhail.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to always say thank you for the privilege of being able to address you and to pray for you and all of our citizens that are present as well. A scripture came to my mind. Actually, Councilman Klein reminded me of it yesterday. It says, "I urge you," it was written in the first century when Christianity was just being formed and instructions were being given to all the new Christians, and Christianity was brand-new, so they were all learning what it meant to be a Christian. And the teacher gave these words to the early Christians in those days, and he said, "I urge you, first of all, to pray for all people. Ask God to help them increase on their behalf," now, excuse me, "intercede on their behalf and give thanks for them. Pray that way for kings and all who are in authority so that we can live peaceful and quiet lives marked by godliness and dignity." I think of what's taking place in our world. We need to pray for leaders of nations, kings, those in authority, and that comes all the way down to our city council level, to pray for those who are in authority in our own community. And so, I would like to close and pray for those in authority in our city, including our first responders, but also be reminded to continually encourage all of our churches in this community to pray for those that are in authority as well. Let's bow our heads real quickly. Thank you. Lord, thank you for those that have taken the time, the effort, even personal finances and sacrifices for their families. I pray for those that are serving in these capacities of our community, that are making decisions, that are plotting a future pathway that would hopefully bring a greater good, greater prosperity, greater peace to our communities. I pray that it would be an opportunity for them to make wise decisions for the best of our community. I also pray for our first responders, who are in authority as well, in our police and in our fire. I pray that you will keep them safe, watch over them, honor them, bring them home safely after each shift, and I thank you, Lord, for the privilege of being able to serve in this great city as well, and we ask those things in your name. Amen and amen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, before we move on, it is November, and we have two council members whose birthdays are in November, so I'd like to wish a happy birthday to Councilmembers Bracco and Councilmember Armandares. Happy birthday. Okay, city clerks report on posting the agenda and roll call.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the agenda was posted on November 2 at 3:21 PM. Councilmember Armandares?
Here.
Councilmember Bracco?
Here.
Councilmember Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton?
Here.
Councilmember Marks?
Here.
And Mayor Blankley?
Here. All right, under orders of the day, I'd like to request everyone that we move item 3.2 to after item 4, because the Open Government Commissioner, who's going to present item 3.2, asked to have a little more time to get here this evening. So that will be after council member reports. Okay, employee introductions, we have none. That brings us to proclamations, and we are going to be proclaiming November 12 through the 18th, 2023, as United Against Hate Week. And so, Susan Myers and Marion Yoder, if you'd please meet me at this podium over here, we will present the proclamation. Okay. I'll just read this, and then we'll get pictures afterwards. So thank you all for being here. I did a little test run. I don't need my glasses to read this one, so we're good. Whereas the United States is a nation of immigrants whose strength comes from its diversity, and whereas the Constitution enshrines equality on all individuals regardless of race, gender, orientation, religion, or political views, and whereas the City of Gilroy wishes to affirm its commitment to the well-being and safety of all of its diverse communities, including Black, Indigenous, and people of color, BIPOC, Asian-American Pacific Islander, AAPI, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning plus, LGBTQ+, and all others, and the City of Gilroy wishes to ensure that its BIPOC, AAPI, LGBTQ+, and other diverse communities are not alone and that they can speak out to help stop the spread of bigotry, and whereas due to the history of violence against communities of color, we must work together to create community-centered solutions that stop the violence in all communities, and whereas the City of Gilroy stands together with our diverse communities and calls on all constituents and leaders to join us in condemning racist, homophobic, and harassing attacks against communities of color in all forms, and renewing our commitment to speak out against such attacks, defend and protect those targeted, and seek out and punish those who commit hate crimes against any members of our community. Now, therefore, I'm Marie Blankley, Mayor of the City of Gilroy, together with the Gilroy City Council on this sixth day of November, 2023, do hereby proclaim November 12 through 18th, 2023, as United Against Hate Week. Yay! Thank you all. Thanks for your attention. And then, if you'd like to say something, that's fine, too. Ready? Okay. Of course. Would you like to hold this one? It's up to you. You want to hold this one? Would you like the same thing? Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. We are thrilled to be able to be part of United Against Hate Week. This year, the Gilroy AAUW and the Interfaith Community of South County are going to be presenting an event, a program, and the program is about a community conversation. We want to talk with everybody about how do we create and ensure that our community is a compassionate community, a place where everything that the mayor just read is happening. So thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a second proclamation that's in the packets. It's Digital Nest Day. Today is their birthday, and they are at the party, and we are here, so the two cannot meet. So that's just for me to announce. Okay, presentations to the council. This is item 3.1, and it's the annual presentation by the Open Government Commission. Not to be confused with the separate presentation that's coming later. This is the, we have annual presentations by each of our commissions each year. So Chair Benz will be giving us this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I am the Chair, Diana Benz, of the Open Government Commission, and here is our report. The Open Government Commission functions under the Gilroy CC 17A.35. The commission advises the city council, provides information to other departments on appropriate ways to implement the Open Government Ordinance. The Open Government Commission develops appropriate goals to ensure practical and timely implementation of the OGO, proposes to the city council amendments to the OGO, reports any practical or policy problems encountered in the administration of OGO, reviews quarterly reports on requests for public records. So during 2023, we actually have been extremely busy. Besides the quarterly review of public record requests made of all departments and divisions in the city, we reviewed, we reviewed the public records requests fulfilled by the city staff. During 2022, there were almost just over 2,800 public records requests and just under 2,500 public records requests through the third quarter, the end of the third quarter of this year, 2023. You can see they're broken down by City Hall and Fire, and then police have their separate numbers. We assigned a commissioner to work with staff on a new version of the Open Governance Ordinance training video that is still in progress. We formed a frequently asked questions subcommittee that we hope will be on the website, the city's website, soon. We created an ad hoc committee to assess how other cities are handling hybrid meetings, and that's the presentation that you'll have later this evening. We accepted the subcommittee recommendations and drafted a council correspondence to city council about the Open Government Commission's findings on the hybrid meeting implementation. So recommendations, so the hybrid meetings, you'll see later this evening. Discussion items, the frequency of open government commissions currently is four times a year. We would like to see that increase to six times a year, so that it's every other month rather than once quarterly. And probably you know that the hybrid meeting landscape has evolved. And, get my glasses here. So, and honestly, that's very timely, because it's been in just the last several months that we've seen a lot of press regarding hybrid meetings. Also, there is a potential ballot initiative to, it's called the Government Transparency Act ballot initiative, and what that means, it's pretty extensive, and one of, just one of the things is that it will require that public records requests be fulfilled, not just responded to, but fulfilled within 30 days. It also will mean amendments to the Open Government Ordinance and the Public Records So that, since it's a ballot initiative, we don't know how far along it is or where we are in the process with that. That's it. So do you have questions?
Counsel, anyone have questions for Diana? Councilmember Bracco?
Diane, do we, do you have the information on how long it takes us to fulfill the request?
10-day, well, fulfill, right now, the language of the Public Records Act is you have to respond within 10 days of receiving a request. And I think that with our city staff, I mean, they endeavor to get it done sooner rather than later, but the requirement is just that they respond within 10 days. Sometimes there's back and forth, depending on the request, is it too vague, or, you know, it's unclear what somebody wants, so there's some back and forth with that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Armandares?
Thank you. My question is along the same lines. So when a request is made, city staff is obligated to respond as if, like a confirmation that they've received the request? And what else? What else is required at this point?
Well, so, response within 10 days, and maybe Ty can jump in here and tell you exactly what the rest of the parameters are, but that's what I know, is that it's within 10 days of response.
Yes, Chair, and Councilmember Armandares, just to let you know that if someone submits a public records request, we submit, we provide them an immediate response that they, we are receipt of their public records request. That's the first item. Then it's up to staff to determine whether or not we have those records or not within the 10 days, and not business days, it's actually the 10th day itself. So if a 10th day lands on a day that the office is closed, it goes to the subsequent day afterwards. On top of that, if we try to do our best, because a lot of the public records are like requests for building permits and whatnot, and that can be done within six to eight days, depending on how staff is busy on that particular timeframe, but if it's going to be a complex one, then we give a determination, like we need, like how long it will take for them to do that. So it depends on the request itself, but we try to do our best depending on the type of requests.
So there's correspondence, there's communication?
Correct.
Between the requister and staff within 10 days?
Yes.
And we don't know the average amount of time it takes?
You know, we probably could figure it out from our reports, but we don't have that number right now. Maybe Ty, do you have a?
From the last one?
It just sounds like it would be really hard to determine, just depending on what kind of request it is, right?
Our average from the second quarter was five days.
Not bad. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions? Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you for your presentation, and you guys have been very busy just for four meetings a year, but I was hoping that maybe you could give a pitch to our other commissions and sort of answer the question, like what gave you, how was it working amongst each other to develop these, these subcommittees, right, to go out, do some research, and then come up with recommendations that you have? Because a lot of times, we don't see that from our commissions and our committees. We just kind of hear what their daily work is, but you've kind of gone, gone above and beyond, so I'd like to just hear a little bit about, like, how that experience was and, you know, maybe a nugget or so of the reasons why you chose to do that.
So in order to make it meaningful to be on the Open Government Commission, I think that you require some curiosity about what shape it takes within your city. I mean, there are not very many cities in Santa Clara County that have open government commissions. So that's, that's one thing. You have to be curious. So the second thing is, we've had some, a couple of new commissioners who are very energetic and very eager, super smart, and anxious to accomplish something. And so, we, as a body, felt that these were the things that we wanted to address. I think that it, I need to say also that the, the city liaison that we have, Jimmy Forbes, has been just tremendous in keeping things relevant and keeping us on track and also letting us know what the proper procedure is. For instance, sending a letter to the council, that kind of thing. So I think those are all.
Yeah, that was the first time I've seen somebody actually address the council with some request. I'll toot my own horn, since I did it. And I really appreciate that, and I really want to see that come in from other commissions. Last question is, do you feel like you all are getting enough training in the, in the commission that you have? Like, training, you know, there at the meeting, but also the opportunity to attend, you know, whether it's webinars or conferences, or I know the city clerk office has a lot of good information, too.
I think we are looking forward to more training. We've had, I mean, initially, when you get on a commission, you have to watch a video of a recorded training. And so, actually, that's why Commissioner Irwin was appointed to figure out a way to improve that, the video, because it's not, it's not very, it's older. I mean, it's been around a while. So, so her job or her task is to freshen it up, make it a little more relevant, put it on the website, so that people who may be interested in joining the Open Government Commission can see that, you know, oh, this is what they do. So.
Thank you.
Sure. Is that it?
Yes, thank you, Diana. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to public comment by, this is agenda item 3.3 now, because we're waiting till after council member reports for what was 2.2, or 3.2. This is the time for anybody, if you, please, if you would like to comment on something that's not on the agenda, that's what this time is for, and if you are one of those people, if you could please fill out a card, hand it to the city clerk, come up to the front row, depending on how many, you'll have up to three minutes to speak, you'll have to see how many people there are, but I ask that whatever it is you wish to say, that you keep in mind that it needs to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of this city council, because there's nothing we can do about that which is not in our jurisdiction. Okay, Ty, how many speakers do we have?
I currently have one speaker card, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Robert Sabata?
Should work. See if the microphone, tap it or something. Yeah, it's on. All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Sorry, I'm a little thrown off because of the time change. But I did wanted to discuss one thing, actually, that we previously already went on the agenda. Let's see. Oh, item 2.1, United Against Hate Week. Now, we can all agree that, you know, no one wants to be hated on, and one thing I wanted to say was, there's a reason why we have a First Amendment that does pertain to each and every individual's right to, to speech and expression, and I do believe we ought to criticize other people's ways of thinking. Now, that doesn't mean specifically that individual, and that could mean their political views, because the truth is, what is hate? You know, it has that negative connotation to it, and automatically, people don't want to be like, oh, no, I don't want to be associated with, with that word. Of course not. You'd rather be associated with more positive terms, like love, peace, kind, those, those type of, that type of positive language that people more aspire to. But the truth is, an individual's right doesn't stop at someone's feelings, and the purpose of the First Amendment, as I already stated, is to allow speech and expression that you oppose, because what is the purpose of having a First Amendment when everyone agrees? Then there is no purpose. And so, there should be someone to criticize and not be agreeing with everyone else. There should be opposition in everything, whether you agree or disagree. I'm not going to get too specific what I agree or disagree. I mean, I've been here many times, so I'm sure a few of you know by now where I stand, but maybe you don't, because frankly, how many of you have personally emailed me, and that's my fault, too. I should, you know, be more in communication with you about certain things and topics that are in this city. That being said, either there should be open debate, and that's what I'm trying to get to, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other speakers? Ty?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and for the record, if you leave your contact information on the card that you fill out for the city clerk, a council member may reach out to you. I know I tried to reach out to this very speaker once and could not, because there was no information on the card. Okay, all right, so council member reports. Councilmember Bracco?
Yes, I wanted to report back that the Library Joint Powers Authority met, and it was reported that the Dolores Huerta exhibit at our library was the most well-attended and most commented-on exhibit they've ever had in the library district. So that's good to hear from our library.
Yes, sure is.
Thank you.
All right, council member Armandares?
No report.
Councilmember Marks?
No report.
Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you. The Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board of Directors authorized entering into the agency's third municipal prepay bond, which, when executed, is expected to save $5 million or more per year. Staff also led a study session about SVE programs focused on reducing emissions from residential building sector. SVE reduces the cost of power purchases by leveraging its ability as a public agency to fund low-tax, low-cost, tax-exempt bonds. Staff will begin the process of executing its third prepay transaction to save approximately $5 million or more annually. When combined with two prior prepay deals, SVE will be saving almost $12 million a year, which would, which would be a cost savings that helps SVE maintain rate discounts and fund decarbonization programs. Approximately 17% of 2022 emissions in SVE service area were from the use of natural gas in residential buildings. The SVE Board of Directors has dedicated $50 million of SVE's portfolio programs to initiatives that test and demonstrate ways we can enable all residents to, to transition away from gas-fired equipment to efficient electric upgrades. From the Valley Transportation Policy Advisory Committee, VTA, and the Equitable Vehicle Miles Travel Mitigation Program Grant Team project recently sponsored and had a booth at the Health and Transit Plaza in downtown Gilroy's Laa Ferenda Festival. They got to not only show the general public how to ride a bus and use the front-loading bike rack, but also engage our residents in multiple languages regarding VMT and TDM. California recently shifted from focusing on vehicular congestion level of service, Level of Service, or LOS, to the total amount of driving called VMT for transportation analysis under SEQA. The use of VMT for SEQA analysis of land use projects became mandatory under SVE 743 in July of 2020. The program grant aligns with VTA's business line of delivering projects and programs by developing the framework for a program that facilitates the funding and implementation of VMT-reducing strategies, such as active transportation improvements, transit signal priority efforts, or transportation demand management measures. VTA is in the process of preparing a climate action and adaptation plan that identifies specific actions VTA can take to minimize contributions to climate change, as well as to adapt and build resilience to long-term climate impacts. The CAP supports sustainability, a core value of VTA's strategic plan, by evaluating actions to reduce greenhouse gases, emissions, and VTA's long-term sustainability goals. Lastly, the CAP seeks to reduce GHG emissions and prepare for climate change impacts. Reducing GHG is a way to mitigate climate change from becoming worse over time. Preparing for long-term climate change impacts is about adapting and building resiliency for the future. The purpose of the CAP is to address these goals with an action-oriented mindset. You could find the draft available for public review and public comment online now. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein?
I have no reports.
Councilmember Tovar?
No reports, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I have one. Caltrain Policy Group, our, that's our local, local formation policy group. Strategy sessions continue for the implementation of the electric trains and grade separations. With Gilroy Sister Cities Association, Takamachi just celebrated 30, or 35 years, their relationship with the City of Gilroy and Takamachi, 35 years, and for those who were able to attend, some of our sister city delegates, no one from, not myself, or anyone from the city or the council, but they went to Takamachi and helped celebrate, so that was, that was great. And this Wednesday, we will have visitors from Angra, a different sister city, here, hosting them on some tours here in Gilroy, and a dinner Wednesday night. Okay, also had a meeting for, well, VTA Board of Directors. The biggest thing I want to share with the council from the VTA Board of Directors meeting is that what is brewing is a tax measure. No surprise there, but it's a tax measure for 2026 through MTC, Metropolitan Transportation Commission, that is attempting to get all nine counties involved. They need a minimum of five to do it. There's no specific information to report yet. They're still trying to figure out what kind of tax measure, will it be sales tax, will it be something else? But it's a giant transportation measure because of all the transportation funding that seems to be constantly needed in order to get public transportation to be viable in the Bay Area. So I just want everyone to know that that's brewing, that's all. And then, the VTA Mobility Partnership met last week, and the Capitol Program Committee is a standing committee of VTA that I also sit on, and the significance of that one to Gilroy is we're trying to identify funding buckets for the Santa Teresa extension, because I think everybody knows, I've been saying this, I think, at other meetings, so we're all up to date, the 101-25 interchange is phase one of that improvement, and that is funded, not just the environmental work, but the actual construction. It's fully funded, and it's going to start in the fall of 2024. That's going to leave Mesa Road and Castro Valley Roads closed off. And so, phase two is the Santa Teresa extension that has funding only for the environmental reviews, not for the construction itself. So we are working hard to get money earmarked to reduce the time between those two, so that the Santa Teresa extension can go and limit the amount of time that Lucesca is the only access from 101 to Santa Teresa Boulevard. Okay, that is my report. So is Shane here?
I have, I have a question.
Two to three minutes out. Okay, we'll continue on and see if We'll continue on and see if he's here after we get to consent then. All right, under Council Correspondence, we have none. Future Council Initiated Items.
If we could just wait to have this until after all the presentations, so that way there's an opportunity, if we hear something in this presentation that we want on a future agenda, we can come back to it, if everybody's in agreement on that.
That's okay. Is that okay with all? I'd appreciate that.
Yes, I'm asking if a council majority would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, okay. That's fine. All right, moving on to the Consent Calendar. Would anyone like to remove something from Consent? Okay, seeing none. Let me go to Public Comment. Do we have any public comments on the Consent Calendar?
No speakers, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment on the Consent Calendar. This is a digital, oh, yeah, thank you. Motion by Councilmember Tovar?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Armendaris, and it's a digital vote. Okay. Got to keep going. Under Item 8, Bids and Proposals, we have none. Under Public Hearings, we have none. Under Unfinished Business, we have none. So I'm going to move us on to Item 11. And hopefully then we'll be able to do 3.2. Is that all right to do? Yeah, Ty's going to do this report. Good evening. Thank you, Ty. This is Introduction of an Ordinance Amending Chapter 17A and 24 of the Gilroy City Code in compliance with the California Public Records Act, Recodification Act AB 473. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and members of the community. Ty Pham, City Clerk of the City of Gilroy. Today, I'm here to present an item for your consideration. An Ordinance Amending Chapter 17A and 24 of the Gilroy City Code. The purpose of this ordinance is to ensure that our local regulations align with recent changes to the California Public Records Act as stipulated by AB 473, the CPRA Recodification Act. To give you some background, in 2021, the California State Legislature enacted AB 473, which led to a comprehensive reorganization and renumbering of the California Public Record Act, also known as CPRA. As a result, the CPRA is now found in a new government code division, starting at Section 7920. These legislative changes necessitate adjustments in our local city code to ensure it's actively reflected in the new CPRA codes. The proposed ordinance addresses amending Chapter 17A Public Records Meeting and Public Records and 24 Television Attendants. These amendments primarily focus on updating references within Chapter 17A and 24 to align them with the newly reorganized CPRA codes. These changes are detailed in Exhibit A and B in the packet. In addition to changing to the reference code to ensure ongoing compliance with evolving state laws, the ordinance includes the phrase "for its successors" after referencing CPRA codes in both Chapter 17A and Chapter 24. This forward-looking provision will enable our city code to remain adaptable to future CPRA changes should they arise. Considering the ministerial nature of the proposed amendments and their critical role in maintaining our city's compliance with state law, staff recommends that the City Council proceed with the introduction and adoption of this ordinance. Should the City Council approve the introduction of this ordinance, it will be brought back in adoption at the November 20 meeting. Once adopted, staff will promptly update the Gilroy City Code to reflect these changes. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ty. All right, Councilmembers, does anyone have any questions for Ty? No, seeing none. Okay, Bryce, do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this?
We have no speakers at this time, Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment. So there are two different action items on this agenda item. So first would be a motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading of the ordinance, made by Councilmember Klein, seconded by Councilmember Marks. That's a roll call vote, is it not?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we'll do the roll call here. Councilmember Armendaris?
Yes.
Councilmember Barco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blenke.
Yes. Okay, and then the second one would be a motion to introduce an ordinance amending. Oh, he's got to read the title. That's right.
Do what we just ordered him to do.
Okay.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Gilroy amending Chapter 17A Public Meetings and Public Records and Chapters 24 Television Attendants to the Gilroy City Code to update the reference California Public Records Act.
All right, thank you. Okay, so then that brings us to the second, which is a motion to introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 17A and 24 of the Gilroy City Code.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Klein and seconded by Councilmember Armendaris. And my script says it's a roll call vote?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Councilmember Armendaris?
Yes.
Councilmember Barco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blenke.
Yes, all right, that passed unanimously. Okay, so now we'll go back to 3.2, Open Government Commission Presentation on Hybrid Meetings. And Commissioner Shane is here. The other, yeah.
Right, Mayor, City Council, thank you for allowing me to provide this presentation. My name is Shane Somavia. I'm a Commissioner on the Open Government Commission here on behalf of my fellow Commissioners, as well as Chair Bentz. We're here to present to you an initiative we were looking, studying, analyzing, that we're titling "Enabling Hybrid Public Meetings." These are the topics that we'll be discussing today, and I've left a point for questions and answers at the end. I'll leave it up to you. If you have questions along the way, feel free to chime in. I have no problem addressing those as well. So we took the initiative as we came together as an Open Government Commission. We reviewed Chapter 17 of the Gilroy City Code, also known as Open Government Ordinance. That kind of gave us the impetus of looking at ways we could encourage and enhance participation from members of the public through public comment. One way we did that was by looking, analyzing, and studying what other cities were doing regarding how they are allowing their public to engage during council meetings. So we looked, studied, analyzed, identified technical benchmarks, you know, how they use technology, policy enhancements, you know, best practices, how do they advertise through their agendas? Are they organized effectively and efficiently to allow the public to know exactly how they can view or how they can provide input? So we looked at all the cities within Santa Clara County, and that kind of led to the recommendations and findings that we identified and provide to you today. So this is a matrix. We call it a capabilities analysis. You've probably seen this before as backup material. One thing I'll highlight, we pulled the population from California Department of Finance, just to give you an idea, you know, if you did a city-to-city comparison. Also, where you see the Agenda and the red, that's every time we've gone back to those particular cities and reconciled their capabilities to their Agenda items. We've actually gone through this cycle four times since we started the initiative, and that's just because the environment has been so dynamic. Some cities have added capability, while others most recently have taken away, for example, Morgan Hill has. But for the most part, you see, a lot of the X's are still where they started, for the most part, among cities. Where you see the columns in green, that's what I'm calling spectators. That's members of the public who just want to watch, not participate in giving public comments. So those are all the abilities where they can view, either through webinar. Some cities allow, you know, have a televised channel where they can watch it. And then as you start moving over to the yellow column, that's what I'm calling the Speaker, or where the members of the public can actually provide comments using one of those forms. So that's kind of how we looked at the capabilities across the city. And then from those agendas, we picked out some of the cities that we felt, based on the agendas and how they were conducting their meetings, to monitor their meetings, explore their technology, look at what tools they were using. And then we looked at, not only necessarily adopting them, but hey, how can we make them fit for Gilroy? So what you're going to see in our analysis here is not only recommendations, but what I call the art of the possible. It'll give you a visual depiction of what we think a possibility could look like for Gilroy. Not directing staff, but just simply to color in your minds what the possibility could look like. We've placed our recommendations in each one of these, I call them pillars. It starts out as a cycle. We analyze and document it. I call it the cycle of, you know, meetings, council meetings, kind of starts with Agenda. That's where we advertise, hey, we're having a meeting. The public has the ability to engage the council in that blue square with rounded corners. And then over to, from the actual meeting, and then over to the archive. So you'll see in our recommendations, in each one of those phases, Agenda, Communications, Meeting, and Archive, we'll have recommendations lined up. The two that we have specifically for the council to make this evening focus solely on enabling hybrid public meetings, allowing members of the public to provide virtual public comments. So our first two findings, as we analyze those agendas of other cities, a lot of it just combined, you know, spectator and speaker abilities, and it was really hard for the public, in my opinion, and in the commission's opinion, to decipher, hey, if you want to be a speaker, okay, which one of these do you need to do? So we gave a recommendation of kind of dividing those out in an Agenda. And this is kind of that art of the possible that I was telling you it would look like. That encircled in red on the left is for spectators. Click on the link, you can dial the number, you can go to the live stream, or watch it on YouTube. The box on the right, or Page 2 on the right, is actually, if you want to be a speaker, that's where you would dial in, link in, fill out a public comment card. Those are those methods for communicating with the City Council. So this was one of our recommendations. And again, this is just an art of the possible. You'll see the little disclaimer at the top. It's just a conceptual, again, to give staff and members of the City Council kind of what we were thinking at the time that could best serve the community of Gilroy. The next finding that we had was in the, we call, in the communication phase. This was, we use a splash screen when we start meetings. We're just trying to look at the space that's available. You see the top header, the bottom header, and maybe advertise to the public, hey, here are ways that you can get into the meeting, not just show up in person, but now you got a splash screen, oh, I could have showed up virtually. Or if you look in an archive and you see this, maybe last week's meeting, maybe members of the public, if the council approves it, may decide, hey, I'm going to zoom in this week now that I know how to do that. This is just one ability with the splash screen. And we just felt, hey, there's space available. It's a great way to get the public to see it and use it. The next finding we saw, some cities kind of just opened it up for public, and I think they experienced a lot of, some hate speech, some Zoom bombing. The ones who are currently successful, and those who have been successful, have had what they call rules of civility and decorum, or that's what we're calling it. They've got something published for members of the public. If you're going to engage with the City Council, you want to be a public speaker, there are some norms you need to follow. I know it's council members, you all have norms that each of you follow as members of the council. This is our commitment as members of the public that we're going to follow if we're going to speak in front of the council and in front of the community. So this is kind of what we ended up outlining as potential rules of civility and decorum. These were crafted from a few different cities, and those derived from Institute for Local Government. On their website, they've identified some best practices. We took a little bit of each of those and adopted, or not adopted, but highlighted what we thought would be good rules of civility and decorum. And these, when we crafted them, weren't specifically targeted at virtual public speakers, but anyone addressing the public. Because as you'll see later on in the presentation, you know, one of the hate groups who Zoom bombed, they didn't just Zoom bomb, they actually showed up in person first. So whatever solution we were wanting to present to the City Council, we want to make sure we addressed all those modes and mediums, and we felt this was a good tool to do that. And then this one, engaging public comment. So this is actually putting our recommendation into effect. Those top three bullets are current process. Hey, if you want to get ahold of the council with a question or concern, you can hit the All Council Members. If you have an Agenda comment, you could hit up the Public Comments, and our city clerk will make sure that's included in the packet. If you fill out a Speaker's Card, you have that opportunity. If the council deems necessary, and they decide to include virtual public comments, those bottom two would be included. So that just shows the opportunities that members of the public have to offer council their opinion. From that, we felt the need to also identify when members of the public could chime in. So we created this public comment matrix. And what that does is it just shows every opportunity the public has to chime in on a comment. So where you see the anytime, any topic, you can hit those two links, anytime, any topic. If it goes to the Public Comments, city clerk will assign that to which Agenda item or no Agenda item. If it goes to City Council, all, you all will get that. But then the primary Agenda is what I call the seven-day Agenda. That's the one that's initially posted. Members of the public can start throwing in public comments at that point using those two email addresses. And again, the block just kind of highlights where there is no opportunity for members of the public to chime in there. The AUG, or the Agenda Post, is the 72-hour Agenda. 72 hours prior to the meeting, members of the public have another opportunity to chime in with comments. The governing body meeting is this, what we're doing here today. You can see, once those comments come in through email, the lines drawn, that's it, they're considered. But members standing up and speaking to the council, that's their opportunity to provide their comments. And then the bottom two addresses, if virtual public comments are included, those would be added to that column as well. Consent Calendar, if an item is placed back on, or is placed on Consent that gives the public another opportunity to chime in, they'll see the Agenda where it's on the Consent Calendar, and they'll be able to address that. If a council member chooses to pull an item off an Agenda or off a Consent, the public has the ability to address that again if they're there in person. If they're not there virtually, and they haven't chimed in in the previous three, they lose the opportunity. So that just not only shows you all the methods for communicating with the council, but all the opportunities, and we felt this was really important. Because it's not lack of opportunity, we felt. It's there. It's just educating the public to let them know where they can chime in. And we would be remiss as a commission if we didn't address kind of a topic de jour, which is the Zoom bombing topic. I highlighted some of the recent Zoom bombing incidents that we've had. Not we, but the community abroad has had. And so some of the ways that we thought to address that, we call it consideration and risk management. risk management. So mitigating Zoom bombs and hate speech, there's a few toolboxes out there that cities can use. Some advocacy groups provide some recommendations. Some cities already do a portion of this. And I'll talk through these that the commission felt were important if the council decides to allow virtual public comments. These are some of the things that could potentially help mitigate Zoom bombing. One of those is Zoom participant registration. So that's an example of a registration form on the right. Some cities, and it's usually the cities who are experiencing Zoom bombing, are using a static webinar address, week after week after week, month after month after month. So these hate groups are seizing on that web address, they're propagating it across their group members. And while they may miss a meeting this month, well, they've got the next 11 months where they can go in and spew their hate speech. Here, using the current capabilities of Zoom, you can register participants. Each meeting, a participant has to register, they get a dynamic link with a password, and that allows them to enter the council meeting virtually. It won't eliminate, but it greatly reduces the amount of Zoom bomb, because it just creates barriers for these hate actors to kind of always enter and...
I got a question on that.
Yes, sir.
So during your research, when you get that unique link, you can't really, if that's registered to your email address, you can't share that out to like a large group because that's only for you, the registered attendee, isn't that correct?
I'm not a Zoom specialist, and some cities use WebEx, so I think it's platform-specific, but there may be ways, if the city decides to go the Zoom route, there may be ways to do that, isolate it just to a specific person who registers.
Thank you.
Shane.
Mary?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Rotova.
Shane, thank you for this. So staying on this here, can you tell me, I mean, I wish we would have had this prior to tonight's meeting to review, obviously, because I kind of researched my own stuff, but just I want to make sure it's in line with what you're presenting, so it would have been nice to have this prior. But when you look at that registration form, which cities are currently using this form? Do you know?
This one I pulled specifically from Campbell.
Campbell, okay.
I believe.
Okay. Because, yeah, I'll save my questions for later, because again, you talked a lot about some of the topics I wanted to...
Shane, is this form, though, in your opinion, your commission, right, looked into this, and as far as all the research you have done, is this form equivalent, is this the Zoom equivalent, or the virtual equivalent, to the yellow card that's here? Okay, because my understanding is even the yellow card, we can't force people to fill out, and we can't, so what purpose do you think this serves if you can't?
I mean, people can absolutely lie on there. It's just another barrier, but it's not a prevention measure.
Yeah, it doesn't actually do any more than we have today in terms of knowing who the speaker is. Yeah.
Well, and when you fill it out, it sends you the link to the meeting.
To an email address.
Right, I understand.
Yes, you have to have a valid email address. And I guess vice...
Okay, so it's all right. I don't want to belabor it, because I don't want you to get way past your 20 minutes. I just want, I want to call that out and know that that would be something for further understanding, right? We would all need to understand that better.
Yes, ma'am. Any, any action that requires identification, we have to look at closely, because in general, it's not allowed in the Brown Act. But interesting ideas, though.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. The second, standards of conduct, we kind of already highlighted that under our proposed rules of civility and decorum. We've seen other cities adopt that. Public comment, front row, because we usually, Madam Mayor, you know, you call public speakers as the front row, there's an opportunity to do that virtually, putting them in a waiting room. Hey, if you're wanting to speak, raise your hand, city clerk can put them in a waiting room, kind of while they're waiting to speak. And a lot of bad actors don't like waiting, so they likely won't get in there. Plus, it gives a kind of a decision point. How many people are in the waiting room? Eleven people. Okay, we're, that's the line, and then, you know, the presiding officer has the ability to change. Okay, now we're going to one minute, because we've met everyone who's in the waiting room, and now other people are just piling on. But those decisions can be made using the waiting room. That's just one example. Request for speaker, that one's not requiring, but if a speaker came up and, you know, a member of the council said, hey, tell me your name and where you're from, I could say, well, I don't want to say that, which is fine, I have that right. But if I'm willing to tell you, hey, my name is Shane, and I live off of 10th Street, you know I'm a constituent, maybe you can weigh it a little bit different than if I'm just anonymous Shane. So that's another opportunity of identifying, you know, a bad actor from maybe a good actor. Disruptors, that's kind of the legal standard. If somebody's being disruptive, you have the ability to mute them, boot them out of the Zoom room, or escort them out of the council chambers. City council statement of values, again, some cities have published statements of values. Some have done resolutions of condemning hate speech. I love what we did today, you know, United Against Hate Speech. So that's another way of telling a lot of these, you know, bad actors, hey, you know, your values don't align with ours, and here's proof, our beautiful poster. Another mechanism, the chair could call a recess, hey, let's do a break. Lot of those, again, bad actors may end up not waiting around for that. And then kind of what I call the nuclear option, we can pull the plug on virtual public comments. So all those are abilities. We just wanted to make sure we didn't propose engaging public comment and not address kind of the ugly part, or the ugly side of it through Zoom bombing. But we felt that these were good, some good mitigating strategies that are already in place.
Shane, can I interrupt you right there? I just, I want to say that, I mean, those are all nice to see, but we do that already. I mean, that, we've, we're not new up here, right? I've been presiding here since 2020, and even before, it was me, it was Mayor Velasco, and we've already experienced two full years of virtual public comment. So we were doing all those things that you said. We still know the experiences that we had, even with those things. So I just want to point that out. It's not that we haven't been there before. Yeah, we know, and so I appreciate a lot of this here, but that's exactly what we already tried to do with the comments that are now no longer virtual, because I have to maintain decorum somehow. And when things are disruptive to the meeting, action has to be taken when something's disruptive. So very much appreciate all of that, but I do want the public to know that we, for two years, were doing it just like that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right.
So this is a summary of all our recommendations as an effort, as our effort to analyze the capabilities of other cities. These were the recommendations we brought back to the commission. Lot of them were passed to staff to look at, consider, some they've adopted, but the big two, the top two, are the ones where the commission's asking the city council to decide on. The others are kind of trigger. If, you know, the council agrees to the top two, then the others kind of trigger down, okay, we'll adjust the agenda, some of the other, the splash screen that I addressed. So that concludes my briefing, and if there's any other questions or comments, I'm definitely here to address those.
I'm sure there are, so thank you. Thank you very much for that presentation. Wonderful. Okay, I'm going to start with Councilmember Bracco and just go down, because I think everybody's going to have something yet to ask.
Like the mayor said, we've done this before, so we have some experience. And I don't see that you addressed any of the issues that we had when we were accepting Zoom calls. You know, the poor connections some people had, you know, people actually didn't know how to use it, and, you know, and they're like, am I here? Am I on? Can you hear me? Oh, you know, over and over. And one of the big ones was people from outside the area calling, and we're having to listen to people for two hours that don't live in Gilroy. But because someone sent out an email to get, that has their own agenda to get people call in, that these people are calling in because it's easier, because they don't have to get up and come to the meeting. And, you know, it, I'll leave it at that.
All right, Councilmember Armandaris.
Sure. A question and then a few comments. Shane, can you, in your interpretation of the open government ordinance, can you tell us how that obligates us, or requires, how is, how do we apply that so that, so that this is kind of a mandate, right, in terms of providing opportunities for engagement and the public to participate?
Yeah, my opinion, and without legal counsel kind of directing me on this, unless we make some changes to the open government ordinance, I don't see it there, but we have kind of an implicit, the commission has an implicit mandate of fostering engagement and participation of the public. And that's kind of the roadmap we used to introduce this. We felt, well, if other cities in Santa Clara County are doing it, why aren't we? And also, well, how many county, or how many cities within Santa Clara County? We really didn't know that until we did the analysis side of it. And that kind of opened up, you know, possibilities, and then it was like, well, what are they doing right? Or how are they leveraging the technology that we could possibly, or even policy-wise?
Thank you. And I just wanted to say, if I could address what Councilmember Bracco mentioned, and also what you mentioned, Mayor, is that, just like on Zoom, right, we've had some inconveniences, and we've had some, some folks who were rude, some folks who were unruly, we've had those in person, right? We've had many, many of those in-person folks who speak out after their time, who are threatening. And, and yet, we, the benefit and the rights of our residents, right, far outweigh that discomfort that we feel, or the inconvenience, right, of having to calm people down, of reminding them of how to behave, or how to speak when they're here, and also not to disrupt our ability to take care of business, right? The thing about folks calling in from out of town is, in that particular case, Councilmember, if you remember, it was about tourism. It was about an attraction that was going to bring people to our community. And those folks specifically who were calling in by the dozen, and I was grateful to them and still thankful to them, that they were calling in because they were saying, hey, I live out of town, I'm a tourist, I'm going to come to your community and spend a lot of money if you do this. And that's the kind of feedback that we do want, that's the kind of, that's, that's what we need. Like, we hire consultants to do that, we put out surveys, we do all kinds of stuff to get that information. And that was real people calling in, telling us, I'm committed to coming to your community if you do this. And I think that's, that's part of the, one of the largest benefits of having Zoom and hybrid. And as part of my job, my nine-to-five job, I participate in council meetings and government meetings all over the state and sometimes the country. And having better access, having an ease of, of engagement balanced with best practices in terms of being able to regulate who's participating, how they're participating, you know, making sure they're legitimate callers and participants, makes for really good meetings that are balanced and, and robust in terms of our democracy. And so I really appreciate your work on this and that of the commission, and hope that we can, we can come to a good decision.
Thank you. Councilmember Marks.
Yes, Shane, I really appreciate all the work you put into this. And yes, one of the topics was tourism, but I remember the two-hour meeting of public comment was on safe gun storage. So we heard from a lot of different people. I did some research, too, and I found 16 cities that have, that were doing this and have now stopped because of the Zoom problems that they were having. I still have problems and issues with this, because I'm just, I guess I'm just old-fashioned, because I feel that we've really lost the quality of sharing good ideas with people coming in person and talking. To me, that means a lot. Everyone says, well, it's more convenient. Yes, but it's more convenient to be rude and to take advantage of the situation, which we have seen. I feel like if something really matters to a person, they come, they come in person, they make that effort. We have email, we have, we have texting, they can call us, they can write letters. You know, there's ample opportunity, because even when they give the public comment over Zoom, we're not allowed to respond to them, so it's no different whether they have written something down. My question, I guess, is for Jimmy. Do we have the capability, the money to, or the equipment, that if we did this, would stop a Zoom bomber in his or her tracks if things got out of line? And, and do we have a staff member who would be able to stop the negative comments?
Well, I, thank you, Ms. Marks. I don't think that I could go as far as to say we could stop any, all of those things. We did have that happen previously, we have it happen in person, so I never could tell you that we have an ability to just stop that. There are some recommendations from the committee that help mitigate that, but there's no absolute.
If I may add, there's a big debate among city attorneys in our area about that very issue, about what is the line where you can cut someone off? It's not really a technological problem, it's more of a legal question of how much do you have to endure, or have the public endure, depending on the comments. We, you know, if we're going to have a general discussion, we really should agendize this.
Thank you. I was wondering, because people are really going into their opinions on this, and it's not an item that anybody has even said we are going to...
Right. This is only, this is only agendized for reporting.
Yes, so, yeah, so I'm just going to go next, because I'm going to go down the line, because that's, we're not supposed to be, yeah, getting into that. And so I want to commend you on the, the green portion of that one slide, where you're talking about ways to make the people more aware of how they can view. So for the, what was the word you used? You didn't say the word passive, but the person who doesn't want to actually make a comment, the one who is in there in that green section.
Spectator.
Spectator, that was the word. I think any ideas as to how we can make that better would be something that has no downside, right? So people have more access. I also think that any ideas or suggestions on how to better advertise or publicize our council meetings and our agendas, so that people are aware, I mean, for the ones who want to be, as you also said, it's all out there. It's just, you know, you can only spoon-feed people to a certain degree before they need to actually do something on their own. So anything about advertising, I think is wonderful. Anything about improving the spectator experience is wonderful. I do think that the ability to provide public comment is already there, and is already made easy. Without getting into what other council members said, I already, you know, wrote my piece on what I think is, is the downside. I do believe there is a downside to virtual public comment that we can't do anything about. But those other two things, I think, I love that you guys took this on, and that you're looking at those things, too. So thank you.
My pleasure.
All right, Councilmember Milton?
May I comment, Madam Mayor?
Sure.
One of those that you mentioned, as far as providing more opportunities as a spectator, Morgan Hill, while they pulled the plug on public comment via Zoom, they still allow Zoom to view and dial in. Gilroy has no dial-in capability, so that's an option where those members of the public who just want to listen, don't have a smartphone, maybe a flip phone, that they can dial in, and it's not data-intensive, that would be one way that...
But that's something that doesn't require a city council, right? That's administrative. So again, the only thing that involves this city council is the virtual participation, not any of this other stuff. Right. Okay, Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you. You know, like many have said before, we've had in-person, you know, hate-type speech, anti-LGBTQ rhetoric, threats of violence, you know, we've allowed that, but like you said, we counter it, right? We do the Gilroy Hands United Against Hate that's all around town, and we, all of us continue to show actions that we, you know, move forward. You know, and I really, you know, I just want to commend you on your report, I was talking about it earlier, the fact that you all went outside the box and did your subgroups and then, you know, came up with some recommendations. Keep it up, don't stop here, you know, keep it going. But there is one thing that I, that you've touched on before that I was hoping you could answer, is that what are the ways, when you have that decorum, when you have those statements of values, what are the ways that you can, that you've seen other, others shut off the hate speech, or give them a warning, and not trying to come up and ad lib what you want to say to them, but literally say, I am going to say this sentence as you go? Can you, can you talk about that? Because I think that's important to have in here.
The city that comes to mind that has like the best, you know, practicing what they preach when it comes to rules of civility and decorum... they preach when it comes to rules of civility and decorum is Los Gatos. Prior to their meetings, they used to stream a video that highlighted, hey, here's, here's what are rules of civility and decorum. They've since, I believe their last meeting, they no longer show it just because people are aware, and they no longer have to reiterate it. But the chair, in those opportunities, was able to decide, hey, you're crossing the line, you've got a warning. Cross the line again, okay, we're cutting you off. So those were outlined in their rules of civility and decorum. And we've highlighted those in our draft, just again, as the art of the possible, if the council chooses to use them.
Yeah. I mean, in requiring someone to say where they're from, you know, I mean, we've been subjected to council members here that have invited paid lobbyists to show up that don't live in Gilroy to vote certain ways, they've gone their way. We've done the same thing with electronic billboards. We had plenty of people from San Jose that didn't want us to do it, and that council members used that to pass. So asking where people are from, it doesn't bother me.
Okay. Councilmember Klein?
I'd like to say, great job in the presentation, and your work as a commission, and doing what you're passionate about, and I appreciate that. Again, I think at this point, just, I wanted to commend you on that, and I think I'm good with that.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you. I'm just taken back by those comments. But Shane, a few things here. So you had mentioned, because I was trying, again, I wish I would have had this prior, because, you know, a few months ago, I was all in favor of hybrid, obviously, because, you know, but me personally, I've been the target of attacks, you know, I mean, by whomever, I mean, I know who, but it is what it is, right? You still move on. But you had mentioned that Campbell has, uses this, I don't see it in there, I just want you to know, because, again, I just want to make sure, I'm trying to get a better.
And I'll take that, and I'll email it.
Yes. And then, I mean, and for me, I have questions, but I think our city administrator answered these questions, because I'm trying to look for what parameters could we set, right, that will allow folks to participate, if it's virtual. But again, there's a lot of concerns that I have, obviously. And, you know, when we're looking at, and Councilmember Marks mentioned, you know, you look at many cities, and I'll just name them, Antioch, Livermore, Atherton, El Cerrito, Fremont, Modesto, Sacramento, you know, Santa Rosa, Burlingame, Morgan Hill, and then I know Milpitas is kind of shifting away from it as well, because of not only the racial attacks, but also the personal attacks, right? Because again, it's easy for someone to go on there. I could, I could be a bomber and fill that out, and still you'd never identify who I, who I was, right? But I guess the questions that I had, because I was trying to look for a way to say, hey, you know what, I could support this. And I'll just kind of read the questions, but I think they've already been answered. If the hybrid meetings were allowed, how can we, as a city, promote a safe and inclusive space where everyone feels safe and respected, right? Unfortunately, we don't have control over that, right? You know, what measures could the city take to protect specific communities such as those of certain race, religion, gender, sexual orientation, from being targeted in addition to racial, excuse me, personal attacks? You had mentioned norms. I love that. I know we have norms, we may not, you know, I could be guilty of it. We don't follow those all the time, right? So I don't think it's something that we could expect, right? And then the final question I had is, you know, what could the city, how could the city ensure effective meetings that are productive and allow for exchange of diverse ideas while preventing anonymous bombers to disrupt these public, you know? So for me, knowing that, and reaching out to other cities where, and I think our city administrators, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, there's not much that we can do, right? And that's my biggest concern, obviously, because again, I'm looking at protecting our citizens, protecting the city council, but also making sure that when folks come to speak, it's folks from our community, right? I don't pay for someone to come out here, or I don't ask people from outside of Gilroy to come to speak on things. So those are my concerns, and I know that you did a great job. I'm just trying to look for that, you know, in between, what can we do, right? But I keep hearing, well, we can't do much, right? And I don't know.
If I may suggest, if the council decides to take this up with a future agenda, and those are good questions. And I would add, from what I know, that every city's wrestling with the same questions, by the way. It's not like one city really has a magic answer.
Right. So, so yeah, again, I commend you for this work. I truly, truly do. And like I said, I enjoy folks coming in and participating. I feel more comfortable when they're here, obviously, than, you know, to be out there. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tovar. Okay. Yes. So, thank you. All right. Thank you very much for that presentation. I'm going to give you a hand. Okay. Okay. So that being the case, the council asked that we then go back to item six, which is future council-initiated agenda items. Is there someone that wants to raise something there, or are we ready to move on?
I would like to raise an agenda item for the future that I asked for previously, and that is that we consider, or that we agendize a discussion on rules of conduct for our meetings, and also that we discuss having hybrid meetings. I'm not sure if we would take those as.
So rules of conduct are for the council, right? Okay. So maybe let's separate those, because maybe some of us would support one, but not both of those items. Okay? So.
If we can do that, that's fine.
Okay. Yeah.
Like the council norms?
Yeah. Well, just put in writing really what we've, what we've already been doing, but make it stronger by putting it in writing, and hope that the public adheres better than the council members do.
Something that could be enforced.
Mayor, I think the norms are for how the council acts. I think this rules of decorum goes more for the public.
Correct.
Rules of decorum.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, that's what she's saying, and that's what I said. I said that, and let's hope then that the public would adhere to those better than council members adhere to our own norms, is what I was saying. Because we have the whole problem among ourselves, too. Okay, so let's start with that one first, okay, that we adopt rules of decorum. Okay? And that's for speakers, any speakers, any public speakers, no matter in what form. Okay? I think that's going to be unanimously supported. Okay? And it is. And then your second one?
Is that we discuss hybrid meetings.
Virtual public comment. That's the only part of it that involves the council? All those other things, all those other things which I wholly support, do not involve the council. That is just staff to just do those.
Public ability to participate virtually.
Right. For public, okay.
For public comment.
So that's her request to agendize virtual public participation. And so that needs someone else to support it?
Sorry, Mayor. So that, what Councilmember Rondares is asking, we're just to have a discussion, again, of more.
She's asking we agendize.
To put it on the agenda.
That we put on the agenda, virtual public comment. So if you like.
I'll be okay with that.
That's what it is. Okay. So it looks like it has majority support to go on the agenda. So it's going on the agenda.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to 11.2. Approval of two Mills Act agreement applications for historic properties located at 286 Fifth Street and 7471 Hannah Street. And the staff report is coming from Cindy.
Good evening. Since 1976, Mills Act legislation has granted cities and historic property owners the authority to enter into an agreement that grants the property owner property tax relief in exchange for the restoration and maintenance of their historic property. Under the city's Mills Act agreement policy adopted in 1997, the city recognizes that the reduction in property taxes will act as a monetary incentive to acquire, maintain, and restore historic property. The city has entered into 19 Mills Act agreements since 2001. The amount of property tax reduction varies from property to property. In fact, properties that have been under the same ownership for a long time may derive less tax benefit from the Mills Act than more recently sold properties, since new transactions often have a higher base assessment under Proposition 13. Under the terms of a Mills Act agreement, the property owner is obligated to preserve and prevent deterioration of the property in keeping with the Secretary of Interior standards. Each agreement includes a 10-year preservation plan outlining the improvements proposed for a property. If the city finds that a property owner is not maintaining their historic property in compliance with their signed agreement, the city could terminate the agreement, and the owner could be subject to significant penalties. The property located at 286 Fifth Street includes a single-family residence and a detached garage, both constructed in 1922 in the colonial revival style. The maximum estimated loss in property tax revenue to the city is $1,190 for the 2024 tax year, even if the owner realized a 100% reduction in their property taxes, which is highly unlikely. The total estimated improvement costs are $238,800, which exceed the estimated tax savings of approximately $98,100 that the homeowner could receive over the 10-year The property located at 7471 Hannah Street includes a single-family residence and a detached garage, both constructed in 1926 in the Spanish colonial revival style. The maximum estimated loss in property tax revenue to the city is $878 for the 2024 tax year, even if the owner realized a 100% reduction in their property taxes. The total estimated improvement costs are $79,200, in addition to the $69,000 invested into the property this year, both which exceed the estimated tax savings of approximately $72,400 that the homeowner could receive over the 10-year period. And please note that the written staff report estimates were based on a six-month property bill, and those numbers were corrected for tonight's presentation. This concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions you have. The property owner for 286 Fifth Street application is also in attendance.
Thank you. That was Sig Sanchez's house? That was Sig Sanchez's house. Yeah, that's the one. Okay, looking to the council. Councilmember Bracco.
Cindy, after they're put into the Mills Act, how aggressive is the city at watching the house, making sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, they just didn't do it for the tax break?
So just prior to the pandemic, we had hired a consultant to actually go out to all of the Mills Act properties and make sure that they are complying with the terms of their agreement. That project was put on hold, and so, you know, if we have sufficient staffing, we can probably bring that back.
Well, wait, what's the current status, then? I mean, right, but, but that doesn't mean people aren't complying. Are, do we know? Do we have situations where we've got homeowners out there that are not complying?
I'm not aware of that situation. What we could do is we could send each of the property owners a letter to their address and ask for a status update. And that's, we can implement that right away.
Okay. Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you. And I think this is what the mayor was asking. Now, question in regards to the Mills Act, what happens if the owner decides that they want to cancel the contract, or if the city decides we want to cancel? What happens in regards to penalties?
So it's a 10-year agreement. So we would, when either the property owner or the city would enter into an audit, we would non-renew the agreement. So it would still stand for 10 years. If for some reason that contract needed to be broken, then they would be potentially subject to those penalties.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions from council? Okay, then going to public comment. We have at least one, I see.
Yes, Madam Mayor, and it's Carlos Sabalos.
Okay, please take the stand. You have three minutes. Oh, yeah, you are supposed to come here, sorry.
Thank you. Well, I'm the owner of 286 Fifth Street, affectionately known as the Gilroy White House. I feel very privileged and honored to own the house. Mr. Sig Sanchez lived there until two years ago. He died 100 years old. And my wife and I has procured the property. We've done some restoration already and retrofitting. We added a solar roof, but it's a Tesla tile, which is seamlessly integrated into the federal revival style. It truly is a piece of American history. Two mayors of Gilroy lived there, and two presidents of the United States were guests at that house. Please, don't be a stranger. It's only a block from here, and come say hi. Thank you.
Thank you. That's great. Okay, any other speakers?
Actually, I walk right by your house every day, so I'm going to knock.
Any other speakers?
No, there's Speaker Carson, Madam Mayor.
All right, closing public comment. And unless there's further council discussion, ready for someone to make a motion?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bracco, and seconded by Councilmember Tovar, to, based on its independent analysis, find that approval of the Mills Act contracts are exempt from review under SEQA pursuant to SEQA guidelines, Section 15331 pertaining to projects involving the maintenance, rehabilitation, restoration, preservation, or reconstruction of historical resources, and where it can be seen with certainty that the Mills Act contracts would not result in a significant environmental effect.
Mayor, just real quick, sorry, Councilmember Klein seconded that, just so you know.
Oh, sorry. Did I say Tovar? I'm getting too used to that.
I appreciate it.
Okay, yeah, no, no, I know it was Klein. Thank you.
It is a digital vote, so I just need Councilmember Tovar and Mayor to vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And second would be a motion to approve the Mills Act program request and authorize the administrator to execute a Mills Act agreement for the property. Okay, this is for 286 Fifth Street. So this was moved by Councilmember Bracco and seconded by Councilmember Klein? Yes? Okay.
This is also a digital vote.
And then looking for the same motion, that passed unanimously, same motion for 7471 Hannah Street.
Motion, second.
Okay. Who, take, okay, Councilmember Rondares made the motion. Councilmember Marks, seconded. Okay.
Digital voting is open.
Yep, also passed unanimously. All right, that brings us to 11.3, which is inclusionary housing introduction. And, okay, it looks like Sharon is going to start us off with this one. Okay.
You're admitting, Mayor, council members and members of the community, we're very excited to introduce the topic of inclusionary housing tonight. And here's some background information. These are the six-cycle Reno numbers for 2023, 2031. These numbers have been etched in our brain. As you've seen, the number for very low-income categories is pretty high. And while the city has been pretty successful in producing the low-income category units through tax credits during the fifth cycle, we know that we could use more help in getting the very low-income categories and the moderate-income categories. And in our 2023 to 2031 housing element, we have this key program, which is to develop inclusionary housing policy or ordinance with an new fee option. And the goal of this policy or ordinance is to develop affordable housing incentives and appropriate inclusionary requirements that's going to help us facilitate affordable housing production, especially in those income categories we're talking about, without significantly constraining housing production. And in spring this year, we actually started the RP process while we were still working on the housing element, because this is a key initiative for the city council as well. In April 2023, we issued a request for proposals, and at the end of that process, we selected a consultant, Echo Northwest. They illustrated a strong economic background and experience in understanding housing markets, barriers to affordable housing, and the impacts of inclusionary housing policies on the financial feasibility of new developments. The amount for the, the budget for this consultant work is $77,133. It's from the general fund, and it's actually from our housing element budget that was not spent. So here's an outline for the presentation tonight that'll be done by our consultant. First, we'll start with the objective, and then talk about the legal context of inclusionary housing, and then a brief synopsis of the city's affordable housing needs. Then we'll move into the regional context of inclusionary housing with some example policies from other cities in the region. And then we will talk about, or introduce the concept of inclusionary housing feasibility, and conclude with the process and milestone for completing the inclusionary housing feasibility study. So the presentation is going to be, you know, 15 to 20 minutes, and then followed by about 10-minute Q and A, or however long the council would like. And as part of our public outreach and community engagement efforts, Cindy, who's serving as the city man, the city, the. the project manager for this, just created a website and this is a simple URL to remember. Gilroy.city/HP stands for Affordable Housing Policy. And tomorrow night, we have a community meeting, the same place here, at the same time. We'll be working, using the app, now wordly for the Spanish translation. And outside there, we have the flyers also. So, you know, members that are attending can pick up a flyer and we hope to see you tomorrow. So now with that, I'm gonna hand this over to our consultants. Thank you.
Hello. Let's see if I get tall. Yeah, thank you for having us today. We're Echo Northwest. We're a multidisciplinary economic consulting firm on the West Coast. We have offices from, all the way from Seattle down to LA. We're really honored to have been selected for this project and to get to come visit your community and learn more about your real estate market and your housing needs. I'm Chris Blatney. I'm a project director with Echo Northwest and I'm leading the project for our consultant team. I also head up our consultant practice throughout California. So I work on these types of housing projects from, again, from San Diego all the way up to Gilroy. Oh, I guess Brisbane's probably the farthest north I've got right now. So we're really happy to be here. I'm gonna let my colleague James introduce himself.
Good evening, James Kim. I'm the, I act as a project manager for this task and as I work with a small group of dedicated people to do the research and the analysis, helping Cindy and Sharon understand our findings and the results. City of Gilroy, like, like many other cities, is going through a housing affordability crisis. It's a national issue and we work on projects up and down the West Coast. Recently, I completed a project with the ABAC, Association Bay Area Governments, on looking at the balance between housing policy to increase housing affordability, whether that might be through middle housing policies, inclusionary housing, or any other policy tools that are usually available to city options. I'm right now working also with BART on looking at their transit investments and its potential impacts on housing prices and rents near transit areas and its implications for housing affordability. Tonight, we present, or Sharon presented some of the agenda. I wanted to start with the legal context. I'm not gonna read through every one of these, but there have been back and forth of legal cases as well as state legislations on what inclusion housing actually looks like. The important point that we arrived is that it is allowed. There are certain conditions of what it, what each city needs to consider when adopting one, when adopting inclusionary housing ordinance. And importantly, the state through the Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, has oversight over what cities adopt, especially through their housing elements. And that could also mean that HCD could require in certain occasions, economic feasibility studies as one we are conducting as part of this project. So RENA, the last cycle, fifth cycle, had put about 1,000 units as a target for the city. They were across all different income spectrums and the city has done pretty well for the very low-income spectrum. The, the second column over there, pretty much the city has met the goal through the most recent years around the permits, building permits. The city has done very well at the low-income category. It is in the moderate-income category where the permits have not met up with the target numbers. And that's not too surprising. The very low-income and low-income categories of housing, affordable housing, are typically supported by public dollars, federal, state, and local. And on the other end, the private market tends to deliver the above moderate-income housing. The moderate income is usually where there's a gap in funding, either from public or private sources. So it is not too surprising that there, the target was difficult to meet. And as Sharon described, the sixth, current latest round of RENA puts a much bigger number. And this is not just for Gilroy. It's for many, most jurisdictions across the state. The state is looking to address its housing affordability crisis through the RENA process as a one important tool that the state has. And the following few slides, some statistics and numbers you might be already familiar with, living here. The city, along with Hollister and Morgan Hill, have grown a lot in the past decade or so. A lot of it has been, not a lot, but a significant portion of it has been driven by migration into the city as people are looking for more affordable places to live. The pandemic and the hybrid work environment has given some options for remote work for some classes of workers. That has given, that has opened up Gilroy as yet another option for people to work and live in. Gilroy is, like I was saying, the prices are relatively more affordable. That's one reason for people moving here. But prices have gone up over the past decade. The average housing price has gone up from just below $500,000 to now just above $1 million for an average housing unit. So that, paired with that is a measure that we can look at when we're thinking about housing affordability. One thing we call cost burdening is when a household spends more than 30% of their income on housing costs. So for renters, that might mean, that would mean rents and utility costs for homeowners. That would mean your mortgages and any other, most other expenses that homeowners usually incur. So if you're spending more than 30% of your income on that, we would call that a cost burdened household. So for homeowners in Gilroy, that's about a third and for renters, that's about half. So this is definitely an issue for this city and it is happening within a broader regional context. As an example, we've talked to some cities about what their housing policies are, what's working, what is not working. Here is a sample list here. What we've noticed is that places like Morgan Hill, Campbell, and Milpitas have some commonalities, such as setting aside 15% of the new units to be affordable. That the affordability range is typically 80% of AMI or area median income for the renters and then 120% for owners. You can also see that they have a program or option to do fee instead of providing the units. Fee in lieu, the amount, dollar amount range differs based on market conditions. And finally, one thing that does stand out for us is that East Powell, they have a higher set aside, the 20% of units that ranging at different levels of income. That might have been a good reason to have a policy based on the current housing needs that's unique to the city. However, one thing we are seeing is that, when we talk to the city, what we heard is that because of the higher set aside, they're getting and receiving additional scrutiny from HCD. They're asking, HCD is asking for justification of this higher set aside amount. Across the county, a lot of jurisdictions already have inclusionary housing ordinance in place. You will see in this darker gray, some cities that do not have it, but they're pursuing it. Saratoga has, is pursuing one as well. And another thing to keep in mind from a developer perspective, the people who are gonna be building this, they're thinking about who, where can they go? Like, where is the, where are the policies? How are they different? Where's the demand, where's the pricing of housing look like in different cities, in the county, even beyond the county? So when you're thinking about inclusionary housing ordinance, it's not just about what the city is going through, but it's, should be in context of what the region is going through. One other concept we wanna introduce to you, if you do not know it yet, is the meaning of area median income. AMI is defined by the state for regions. Essentially, the whole counties share the same AMI. Lower AMI categories, 30% and 50%, is usually where public funding is needed. Whereas 150% of AMI and above, or units that could be afforded by households earning that level of income tends to be new construction, market rate privately funded units. Importantly, for this project, what we're thinking about is the difference between AMI and what people here are earning. So like I said, AMI is defined at the regional level and your affordable housing and inclusionary housing policies will be tied to those AMIs. It's most likely, that's the easiest ways to define it, the easiest ways nonprofits developers understand affordable housing. So if you define a unit to be affordable by 80% of AMI on paper, that really means somewhere around 110% of a Gilroy household's income level. So you would be, that policy set at 80% of AMI would really be accessible to about more than half of the households in Gilroy. Whereas if you wanted to, say, assist households earning 50% of the city's income, median income, then that might mean actually setting a policy that is defined as 30% of AMI, the regional defined number. So here, I'm gonna hand it off back to Chris.
Thanks. I'm gonna share with you some slides. So I, this actually started as a lecture that I used to give to a graduate class on real estate market analysis and I've found it to be a very useful tool in establishing kind of like an inclusionary 101. And we like to do this at the beginning of these projects so that when we come back to you in the springtime with recommendations, it's not gonna be the first time that you've been introduced to some of these concepts. And so the first I'd like to talk about is some of the characteristics of an inclusionary policy and how each one of these characteristics really kind of falls along a spectrum of flexibility between being more flexible against being more rigid. Oftentimes, most of the time, especially in California, inclusionary housing policies are mandatory. So they're mandatory set asides for a project above a certain size threshold. There are alternatives. We've mentioned a fee in lieu. It is state law now where you have to offer some alternative, but the more alternatives you can offer, the more flexible your policy is gonna be from the perspective of a developer. So you could allow land dedication or you could allow somebody to do a 100% affordable project if they have multiple sites. Those are just a couple of examples. James introduced the concept of set asides. And so this is the rate of units in a building that you would be requiring. So 15% is fairly standard in the region. Another is the depth of affordability. So this is whether you are requiring those units to be set aside at 30% of AMI or 80% of AMI. And that really needs to be calibrated with your housing needs. Then you have characteristics around citywide or a location-specific. The slide that James showed in Morgan Hill, Morgan Hill has a location-specific policy where they have a different set aside rate in their downtown. So again, we're gonna be taking a look at your area, how diverse is the real estate typologies? Does it make sense to have a policy that's more calibrated in a certain part of town versus another? And then incentives. I'm gonna talk a lot about incentives in a moment. But, so how, how, what are the most effective incentives that you can be offering as a community to offset the potential downside risks to development associated with an inclusionary housing policy? And so with respect to this concept of set asides and depth of affordability level, it generally operates on a spectrum like this. And that is that you typically see deeper affordability levels. You're effectively buying some level of, some combination of, of depth of affordability and units. And so if you have deeper affordability, you can generally only have a fewer number of units without having adverse impact on feasibility. Whereas if your, your depth of affordability is higher, that might translate into a larger number of units. And so I'm gonna talk a little bit about a concept of, called residual land value. And this is how we go about our analysis. And so we take a development feasibility approach because we feel that it's most important when you're considering these policies that you are calibrating your policy in a way that is not gonna have an adverse impact on actual development occurring in your community. And this is why HCD has this authoritative oversight, to ensure that communities aren't putting undue burden on development that ultimately results in an unintended consequence of just fewer amounts of development than what otherwise would have been. And so I'm gonna start with the left-hand column here and this is effectively how a, a real estate pro forma would work in a very simple term. And this is development value. And so this is the net operating income or the sale of, of, of units in a for-sale market. And it's a for-sale product. And so we generally take this as fixed. Like, this is, it's market-driven. This is the maximum value at completion that a building, if we're just using a building as an example, would, would be able to get in, in the current market. Now, on the right side here, we're showing what it costs to build that building. And so that's a function of basically hard costs, which is construction materials, all those things, and then soft costs, which include architecture fees, city fees, and threshold returns, so the return to the developer. And so what's left over is this, this metric that we use called residual land value. And you could think about this as land budget. So this is a developer's maximum amount that they can pay for a piece of land and given the fixed nature of all these other characteristics. So what happens when you introduce an inclusionary policy is you have a reduction in that achievable value. So now you're saying a certain number of these units had to be set aside at a lower rate. Now the building is actually, by definition, worth less. So if you now, the building is worth, worth less, then something on the other side of the equation has to give, right? And if we're taking these other two as generally fixed, it comes off of land budget. So now this is gonna have an adverse impact on your land values. And so you'll, you'll end up in situations where a, one of, one of a couple of outcomes could happen here. One, landowners are willing to accept lower prices for their land, which is generally not common. We don't see that happen very often. In areas where other uses, other than residential, are allowed, you will see other uses start to outbid residential uses. So if office is allowed or retail is allowed, maybe that use has now a higher residual land value. You pay more for land, you get less residential development. And then, whoops, and then more commonly, development doesn't occur at all. And this gets to the notion that James introduced about flight of capital. So capital for real estate, like any other asset, competes in an open market against other uses. And if a development, a real estate development of a given form can no longer attract a threshold return that will attract capital, then that won't, it just won't happen here. And so what we do, introducing the concept of incentives, when you have an incentive that could be, take the form of a density bonus, it could take the form of a fee waiver, you're now adding some of that value back. You're giving a development something that it didn't otherwise have that is able to derive value from. So it could get more units. Maybe there's a development concession or a development standard concession. There's a range of incentives that we're gonna explore as being most appropriate for the real estate market that you have here in Gilroy. And so what that happens is when you're delivering some of that value back through an incentive, then the land budget can go back up again and your market becomes back into, into an equilibrium point. So that was a lot. I have a few more slides. Just, I'll go through real quick to talk about the project and then I can take some questions. This is where we're at and I can go back to any of those slides and describe them in greater detail. This is where we're at today. We've been, we've done a series of memos where we've taken a look, we've done a market analysis of your real estate market. We've took a look at your existing housing need and demographic conditions. And we've done this analysis of both statewide and local policies and how they might interact with your inclusionary housing policy. We've done some interviews with developers and with the cities, peer cities in the area. And then tomorrow, we will be doing a public workshop and introducing some of these concepts with anybody that wishes to attend. We'll be getting this feedback here in November and then we will have a memo summarizing our policy recommendations here in the spring. We'll be back here in Gilroy. Happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, councilmembers, I'm looking towards Councilmember Barco. I don't see anything, so Councilmember Armadere.
Sure.
Sure. Thank you. I learned a lot in a quick, your quick presentation. I'm wondering, and forgive my, as I formulate this question, when we provide in lieu fees, right, those are mandated that we provide those, do you provide information to us, a graphic comparing or projecting land and construction costs as compared to what the in lieu fees will be?
Yes.
Or what they could be projected to be?
So if I went back to this slide here, we kind of, we do a calculation of what we project to be the maximum supportable fee that a developer could pay and not have it adversely impact development feasibility. And so that's part of our deliverable is to do that calculation of what you could reasonably charge. Well, we calculate the maximum of what you could reasonably charge and not have serious disruption to the real estate market. But then we give you a recommendation that I think is reasonable because you don't want to push it all the way to the envelope.
So the option for in lieu fees is mandated by the state?
No. An A alternative is mandated by the state? The most common is?
Is in lieu fees. So I think my lens is different. I'm saying if we as a city provide the option to give us in lieu fees, will you provide us with the information that tells us? Like, how will we fare if we try to use those in lieu fees for our own development, right, instead of getting tangible, actual housing, right, from these developers versus if we take money, right? Like how is that money going to fare in the long run?
Yeah, yeah.
In terms of us doing it?
We'll be doing some discussions with staff around what, this gets to the notion of administrative capacity. So some jurisdictions try to encourage use of the inclusionary units because they don't want to be involved in developing housing, right? Others that may have greater capacity or maybe they have a site that they're targeting may want to encourage an in lieu fee. It's not within our scope to give you a recommendation of which is best for you, but because our scope is generally limited to being a real estate feasibility analysis, we will give you an estimate of what the per square foot fee should, should be. And you could take that out across your development horizon or your expectations of development and say, okay, well, if everybody chose the in lieu fee, then we would end up with $5 million. What would we do with that $5 million? But we don't have scope in our budget to provide recommendations of how to do that within your own administrative capacity.
No, not the recommendation, but the data is what I was looking for.
For the what?
The data.
Yes, the data.
You could project out the costs, as you did here, in terms of hard and soft costs. And then another question, in terms of the timeline of what you're going to provide over the, for the contract, could you provide, could you schedule another community meeting in terms, once you have recommendations that?
James, he might be, I don't know sure if we have another community meeting in our budget or?
Because this one would be together, like, community ideas and to share information. But once we have recommendations or information from you, I think the community would benefit from hearing this.
I can address that. I don't think we have a second community meeting in our, in our budget and scope. We do have another presentation to council, but we do have a contingency, so we may be able to. Cindy's got it.
Yeah.
So regardless of whether there is budget in their contract to have a community meeting, we can have a community meeting led by city staff.
Yeah, I think that'd be great for our community here, what, what becomes of this, right? Especially if they have the opportunity to give the input. Right. Thank you, Cindy.
Okay. Councilmember Marks, do you have anything? No? No? Yes? Councilmember Hilton?
Yeah, thank you for doing that because, you know, I just found out about the meeting tomorrow too and I think it's, it's really hard to get all that, get the momentum going and stuff like that, but I'm, I know our staff can knock it out.
I'm sure.
So thank you all for being here. This is a milestone for Gilroy, you know, to have this kind of inclusionary housing ordinance. It's been mentioned in the past of our housing elements, having done it. Councilmember Armadere will remember back in 2018 when the civil grand jury looked at it. We haven't done it, so this is a, this is a milestone and you have the support of all of us up here. I appreciate that. Is the NEXUS study, is that something that you all will be doing or is that something that our staff does?
Yeah. An inclusionary policy does not require a NEXUS study.
Okay. So when they're finished, I just have a question about the NEXUS study to staff. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Klein, do you have anything? No? Councilmember Tovar? No? Okay, I'd like to go to, thank you.
Yeah.
Then I'd like to go to public comment next, if we have any, and then come back to council.
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor?
No speaker card. Okay, then closing public comment. And Councilmember Hilton, you said you had a question for staff?
Yes, either Cindy or Sharon. Can you all talk briefly about the county collaborative and, and the NEXUS study opportunities to, that you all have been presented on?
So yeah, the county collaborative just released an RFP and it's basically kind of broken into two components. There's a residential feasibility study and a commercial NEXUS study. And as was mentioned, under the residential inclusionary ordinance, a NEXUS study is not required if we stay at the 15%. And so that is a consideration.
Okay. But if, but if it were, if we did need those services, at least we have, you know, technical support and, and a reason that, that, you know, that can help us get through that, right? That was the whole purpose of, of joining with that collaborative and latching on to that, the nexus that they would be doing. Is that correct or no?
So we, because we hired our own consultant for the residential inclusionary part, we did not sign on to be part of the county collaborative residential portion. That would require more funding and it would be kind of difficult to navigate their process and our process at the same time.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. This is an information only so far, correct? We don't need, there's no action to take here, so we will move on to city administrators' reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have one quick announcement. This Saturday at 11:00, 11:00 a.m. is the Veterans Day Memorial Ceremony at the Veterans Building. And then at 1 o'clock is the Veterans Parade, which will be downtown. So please participate if you get the opportunity. It's a really a great event. I've been to a few times and I encourage all of you to pay respect to our veterans. That's all my report.
All right. Thank you. City attorneys' reports.
No report.
Okay. Why don't you do the closed session spiel?
All right. Sure. We have two closed sessions tonight. The first, item 14.1 is conference with legal counsel pending litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Gilroy City Code Section 17A113B. The name of the case is the Law Foundation of Silicon Valley v. Superior Court, Sixth District Court of Appeal H09H049554, and City of Gilroy v. Superior Court, Sixth District Court of Appeal H049552. The second closed session is conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8, Gilroy Code 17A8A2. The properties are the 10th Street Bridge, APNs 808-19007, 799-30006, 799-30007, 808-1920, 808-5999. The Thomas and Chester Bridge, APNs 808-2125, 808, yeah, 808-2123, 808-2121, 808-2118, New Fire Station, APNs 808-18003, 808-19029. Negotiators are Jimmy Forbes, city administrator, the other party is Glen Loma Corporation, John Felice Jr., negotiating price in terms of payment regarding purchase and sale. So we have three things to do before we go into closed session. The first is to take public comment, if there is any.
Do we have any public comment?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor?
All right.
Okay. The second then is pursuant to the OGO. For the first item pending litigation, I have to give you my advice that the interests of the city would be harmed if we do not assert the public, the attorney client privilege and go into closed session to discuss this. And then we need to vote to go into that closed session. So we need to take that vote right now.
Okay.
Would we take a motion to do it?
No, you just, we just?
We just a thumbs up, I think, yeah.
Okay. All right. The vote's unanimous to go into closed session. Once we go into closed session, we will take another vote to stay in closed session for the second item.
Okay.
And that will be a reportable action.
Okay.
So that concludes the reading.
All right. So everybody, if you could turn off your mics, we'll let the city clerk shut everything down and we'll reconvene at 8:05.